Ladies, sorry.
It's alright, do you need a packet?
I've got everything printed out.
This is Doug Herman?
Yes.
Dean Dean Lewis, he's a member of the committee. So we've got four here. So let's go ahead and we got a quorum, so we're going to call a meeting to order. Melissa, you got the roll call. You've got everybody here.
John, Mike, Don and Dean present.
Right, that's right, yep. Make him mention that Dakota sellers and Doug are also in attendance. Okay, so we just got one order of business here, and that is request rezon 903 B Avenue from R3, well, it's not R3, it's R1 to B1. So I guess the first thing, when you applied for this, you, did you look at the requirements for a commercial zone? Did you go through any of the regulations, the code, that type of thing?
Yeah, the first time we took it here, I wanted R3 because of essentially to reduce my investment. It's best suited for two-family residents, but obviously there's another area that could be allowed. So when we originally came to it, the biggest hurdle was spot zoning, because if any touch any R3, it touched commercial and R1. And so the big deal was, this is what it is. So we went down the whole rabbit hole of R3 as far as the legality of spot zoning. If it's legal, did all that three, four times, it just, you know, went on forever.
The lot was a large.
Well, yeah, that was the last, that was the last one that did it, and so obviously.
So there's two multiple things that were, that denied your request.
Well, that was never, the lot size was actually never brought before you guys. That was like a, that was thrown in the mix after we had, I had come here the first time. I went to the city council, they came back here, right? That was not brought up at all. And then the last city council meeting, I was told that the biggest thing that I needed to do is I needed to allow the city to put a restriction on my deed, because their concern was that if the property ever turned into a fourplex or a fiveplex, because R3 allows that, that they didn't. And I said, I have no problem reducing it to just two-family home. And that's where I left with the city council. And then the next day was when the last thing was dropped on, that it doesn't meet it. So it was just another thing. But we, I feel confident that where we were at before that was if I got that deed restriction and then that got dug out of the woodwork, and that was the ultimate reason to shut it down. So when we originally did it, obviously there's no issue with spot zoning. If it touches commercial, it obviously does touch commercial. And so that's what we originally wanted to do. I didn't want to do that because I didn't want to make the investment to turn that last space into a commercial space. So while this whole process was going, I basically found a cost-effective solution that'll allow it to be a commercial property, but reduce the amount of investment, so I don't have to make it a full-fledged, I don't have to mess with the like street traffic or anything like that, because it's not going to be a retail store. It's not going to, it's not going to create a bottleneck basically over there where Casey's is now. So that's, and so I basically, I've secured a tenant for the commercial square footage of the, of the. And so it looks to me like there's only, there's only three concerns with this application that have been brought up. And I've obviously thoroughly researched the zoning code. I know that, because I got the same packet, Doug provided it to me. I got the same packet as far as what the concerns were, and basically where I am at is I can address those three concerns as far as foundational of what the ordinance is that allows this to be done. And, you know, I'm not speaking for anybody, but I remember the meetings, it was, not that it wasn't a good project, it was that, and I understand you guys denied it because it was considered spot zoning, and you didn't want to create a snowball effect of everybody and their uncle that has a big two-story house coming to you to rezone it as R3. And that was the biggest hurdle at that point, that it was denied, not that it was a bad idea, or that it wasn't a good use of the property or whatever. And so, yeah, so when it comes to the three items, like I.
So let's go, let's go through those three items. So, you know, there's a question about the front yard setbacks, and to be honest with you, I can't figure that out.
Yep. So the biggest, the biggest thing with, I don't, I don't like how the information was presented to you as far as like bits and pieces were picked out, as far as instead of reading the whole code. When it comes to offsets and setback requirements and stuff like that, that pertains to a new structure, an erection of a property, not a rezone of an existing structure. So the very first, very first item, I've got it highlighted.
Is that the front yard setback is what you're talking about?
Just, yeah, the, you can, just so you know, you can measure the front yard setback from the center of the street. So it's not a front yard setback that is the issue, because it doesn't, I'm more than that.
I, I don't, I don't think the front yard is an issue, because I, that code is so ambiguous, I can't even figure it out. I can read it ten times, and I can't understand it. So I'm not, I'm not terribly concerned about the front yard, but let's get to the side yard.
Yep.
Just to clarify one point, jump in. Setbacks are measured from the right-of-way line, not from the center of the street. So if there's a twenty-foot setback, it's from the right-of-way line. If it was from the center of the street, a lot of times you'd barely be out of the street.
Right.
So usually go to the back of the sidewalk, basically. It's kind of common where the setback line stops, I'm sorry, where the right-of-way stops, then you measure it from there.
It's not from the, the street necessarily?
No, because usually you've got.
The center line of the street, just like the curb or something like that.
I'm going to guess in this case, you've got, let's, is it a sixty-foot right-of-way there?
Probably, yeah.
I think it's sixty-six.
Okay, that's, happens to, so basically, and it isn't always true, but center of the street, thirty-three feet each way would be about where your setback is. Now, the streets aren't always centered, so that's kind of a case-by-case analysis, but it's from the outside boundary of that sixty-six where you measure your setback from.
Outside boundary of the sixty-six feet till thirty, so that puts you pretty close to the sidewalk.
Usually the, yeah, so when the code talks about like a side yard setback, for example, let's say it's twenty feet, just for argument's sake. That gets measured from the back of the sidewalk towards the house. It doesn't get measured from the curb towards the house, from the center of the street towards the house. It's from the back of the sidewalk, which is generally where your right-of-way stops.
And you say the back of the sidewalk, towards the street or towards the house?
Towards the house. Yep. Because usually your sidewalk, the parking, the grass between the sidewalk and the curb, the curb and the street, that's all city right-of-way. So it's twenty feet, when we use, I'm just using twenty feet as an example, but twenty feet from the edge of the right-of-way towards the structure.
Well, if that's the case, then that would be an issue, I would think, because I'm not sure from the back of the sidewalk to the porch, it's going to be twenty feet.
So that, so when it comes to setbacks, setbacks is once like the, if you read the whole code, basically, like I said, this is correct. So if I build a new structure, I have to meet code for that existing zoning. But if it's an existing structure, and the reason that this is important is because the whole point of the code is to allow legal continued use of a structure. As long as, and I'm, where I'm at is, I'm not allowed to, I'm not allowed to expand on the structure at all, because I'd be breaking. So Blake cannot issue me a building permit on the exterior of the property, because I'd be expanding the non-conformity of it. But to rezone, I'm not changing the outward structure of the, the house. So the house is going to stay exactly where it is. If the house gets knocked down by a tornado or caught on fire, at that point, I have a, I have a channel to go to rebuild the exact structure within one year, right? Or I have to, if I don't get that complete in a year, then I essentially have to meet the existing requirements for what is allowed on the structure.
Okay, well, see, I don't think, I don't think you're right there. I think these setbacks apply to existing buildings, not new buildings.
So they don't, because the, so the.
I don't think so.
So the most recent example of this is everybody in here obviously knows Steve Berry. Steve's just got rezoned from R3 to commercial. His building that is on that lot does not meet the setback requirements that are, it's the exact same situation as what I'm dealing with. He's sixteen foot off of the R3 residential with that building. So that's the whole, that, that obviously went through and that got passed. It was recommended, and that is an exact example of this, this exact situation that we're dealing with. So the increasing the non-conformity, I can't do that. I can't increase it, I can't expand on the property. I, I went above and beyond.
So the side setbacks don't apply to an existing building?
Not if it's existing, no. So when it, if the structure's there and the structure remains there, it doesn't apply to that.
Well, I would say it, it only doesn't apply from the standpoint that it's an existing non-conformity use. So the city can't go in and say that house has to get tore down because you don't meet setbacks. Would you agree with that?
No. So when you read everything, like it, it tells we're like side yards, where dwelling units are erected. Oh, that's above commercial, so that's not the same thing, because it's on the main floor. So I have it highlighted.
Well, to answer your question, setbacks apply to every property, existing.
And in every building, yes.
Yeah, that's what I think too. So don't talk about new buildings, we're talking about this existing building.
But the code.
Now you tell me, tell me how you're going to make the twenty-foot side yard setback on your existing building?
You, you don't meet the twenty-foot, it's, because the building is staying the same. The building is not changing, the outward, the.
You've got to meet a twenty-foot side yard setback from existing.
So non-conforming uses are allowed to be continued to be non-conforming uses, so long as they don't increase the non-conformity of it. I am not increasing the non-conformity of this by changing it from R1 to commercial. It says that in the code. I'm, I've researched it through and through, and if somebody can pick out a point that says that that's not the case, but the code says that a non-conforming structure can be allowed to be, can allow to exist, but it cannot increase the non-conformity of that structure. The structure is not being erected, it's not being built.
Once it's deemed to be in that zone, we have to allow you to do that for it to be a non-conforming building in that zone.
Yeah, so.
You see what I'm saying?
Correct.
So, so for us to do that, we still have to look at this stuff, of we, whether we want to let that happen. You can't just say it's, it's not already a, a, a commercial building, and it's non-conforming, and I'm going to continue it to be a, a commercial building. You're trying to change it into a commercial building, so we have to consider these things, these setbacks, in my opinion. Now, the Board of Adjustment may be able to do something about this, but I don't feel like I can allow that type of a building in a, as a commercial building.
It doesn't, as a commercial.
It doesn't meet any of the setbacks.
So, so my, my.
So when it becomes a commercial building, you're.
So my question is this, this exact board, okay? And Steve's already done, so I can't.
Hey, hey, no, we're not talking, no, I don't want to talk about Steve Berry.
No, no, so we have, we have to bring it up. Done, we have to bring it up.
I'm going to talk about you. Steve Berry is done.
It's the exact same issue. So what I'm saying is if the ordinance allows, stop, Don.
We're just talking about your. I don't care what the issue was.
Don, you're talking over top of me. If the ordinance allows that lot to be zoned from R3 to commercial, which is a less restrictive zone, that structure is a non-conforming structure. There's no house attached to it. It's a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. How is Steve Berry allowed to have that building exist?
Are you talking about his bowling alley?
Nope, I'm talking about the shed in the back corner, which is the reason that he had to do that. So it's already done, it can't be repealed or anything like that. So my question is, oh yeah, you just did it, Blake.
We did it a week ago, two weeks ago, last meeting we had.
So my question is, that's sixteen feet off of the R3, which is exactly the same thing that I'm dealing with. It's exactly the same situation. So it's a, taking a non-conforming structure, Steve's told, hey, you got to build a house there to get it to conform, right? Or we can rezone it to commercial. And then that structure's allowed to exist, it's allowed to be upzoned to commercial. I'm asking for the exact same thing. My building is not going to change, Steve was not going to change that building, but my setbacks are what they are. So Steve's setbacks are what they were, that's allowed to be done, so my question becomes.
Maybe we need to move to the next item, the, the parking situation then? We're just chasing our tail on this.
Well, the parking can be met, that's not, that's not difficult. I have four spots in the driveway off of the property. I have ample, you got to have a hundred and eighty square feet, so you can do a ten by eighteen spot. I can get up to eleven spots with that, even that crazy loophole of the ten-foot by fifty-seven unloading zone. I can fit that in the lot. I'll gravel it. I'm not, obviously didn't that now, but I, you can make that contingent on occupancy. But I have a pitcher that I'm able to essentially make that work. So I can make the off-street parking work, that's not a problem whatsoever. I can get six spots on the lot, I can put gravel in there. It won't look tacky, it won't be nothing like that, and it'll meet the requirements of what the off-street parking is allowed.
So are you, is that that, that drawing you gave us initially?
So initially, and then I redid it, because we got the, the ten by fifty-seven loophole, the unloading zone in there. So I redrew it, and I didn't draw it with all the spots, but just on this spot, I have the unloading zone. I have two spots and then four spots, so technically I have the six spots plus the unloading, but there's ample room. There's actually, you can get an additional one, two, three, four spots on here. So I can get with the unloading zone, if I don't move that around, I can get nine with it oriented this way, or I believe eleven if I orient it the other way. But either way, I can make, it won't ever get used, but I can, I can make it, I can make it adequate off-street parking, so.
And you'll give us a diagram of that?
Yeah, it's right here. So I have, I have the outline. So you have a driveway that has four spots in it. There's two spots on the front of the house, which has been a concern. This is a different one, I just, it's different.
Different.
Yep, I just, because this is the one that, and I had those at an angle, and it didn't necessarily drive. But Blake has mentioned the current tenant in there that's living in the house portion of it. She parks on the street. She has ability to park in the driveway, she doesn't, obviously because of the front door. So this would eliminate the need or the want for them to park on the front of the street anyway. So you actually get a car or two off the street, because you would have, that unit would have those two spots basically right in front of the door. So, not in front of the door, but to the left side of the door, so that they could be off of the street.
I don't know what the new diagram looks like, but looking at the original one.
It's substantially different than that one, so.
With regard to the garage, though, it looks like you've got four spots, two end to end.
Correct, correct.
And two of those spots are well out into the right-of-way. Well, maybe not. That garage sits back, I guess, huh?
Yeah, it's a subterranean garage.
It just depends, I guess, where the right-of-way line is, because there is that white line. Is that the right-of-way line right there?
Does the right-of-way line have anything to do with the lot line?
Well, yes and no. I mean, the right-of-way line shows what's been dedicated for public use. And this, the code, or the vision from it, but you can't have parking spots designated within the right-of-way. And I'm not sure, again, if you.
And there's, there's more spots available than what I drew on here, but I can, I've sticked it out, and I can map it out, and I can make the parking. So there's also another spot directly next to the garage that you can park as well, if I decided that I wanted to do that and still meet that unloading area.
Well, I, you know, I might be wrong, but, you know, those two, those two parking spots in the front?
Yep.
I'm pretty sure there's a code that says if you're commercial, but it's a residential area, you can't be within twenty feet?
It doesn't, it pertains to parking. That's the, that's the setback that you're talking about.
No, it's parking.
There was something about parking too, right?
It's parking.
Okay, I can move into the other side of the door too, and it would be twenty feet away from a residential.
When you look at B Avenue, that's going to tell me this wrong, but there's this little sidewalk stub coming in. There's no sidewalk here, correct?
No, there isn't on the, on the, on the north side.
Okay. If there, and this is just from a right-of-way standpoint, the back end of that sidewalk extended.
Right.
Follows that black line.
Yep.
So that's your right-of-way, from there to this black line down here. So these two spots could not be there. Because those are, you know, there could be a sidewalk here someday, and the sidewalk would go right through those.
Yeah.
And those spots would be basically parking in the right-of-way, right back up to the curb line.
So this, this drawing that you've given us shows two possible spots in the, in the ten by fifty-seven. Because you can't, you can't use the, the two spots out in the right-of-way, and you can't use the ones in the front yard. So you would need to come up with four additional.
I can use the ones in the driveway. It's, it's off, it's off-street parking.
No, parking has to be on private property.
It, it.
It's, parking has to be on private property.
Okay. There's, there's ample, there's ample room to make that for.
Uh, well.
So there's another spot, if you look directly next to this, it's very dark, but there's another spot that you can make right there that fits within the lot line of the vehicle, or of the house. You can move this spot over one, you can also pick up another spot right here, which would give you your six. So you have three on the front, three on the side. I'm under the understanding that I read the code that you only needed five, but it doesn't matter, because I can fit six on there. I can fit six geographically on this. And you can put a contention that I have them, I have it gravelled over. You can do whatever you want as far as making it require that I have X amount of square foot for parking. I already intend on cutting the curb, because it has a B Avenue address, but it doesn't have a B Avenue entrance. So I already plan on cutting the curb right there to have that first unit to get those cars off of the street, which is where they're currently parking, because they don't want to park behind the house, which I understand. And then the ones that would be behind the house can have their two spots, and in the driveway, the other two spots can be on the property as well. So they will fit in there. I only printed out the way that I would prefer to do it, but there's ample amount of square footage as far as if you tape it off to get the parking spots in the lot. And you can put a contingency on it that before I get occupancy to occupy that, that deal, that I provide to the city that these are the adequate, if I don't, that I can't get occupancy, and I can't use that unit, which will be complete at that point, basically. So I've invested all that time and money and not be able to do anything like that.
So I have a question too, I'm kind of hopping, but the very first sentence in that setback compliance talks about the twenty-foot side yard setback.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be to the south, right?
Right.
Is that, is that an issue, or is there?
Well, it's an issue with me.
I mean, where is that measured from?
Well, it's measured from the lot line to anything projects, building projects into that area.
Any structure.
Any part of the structure.
And that's where we're going to differ, because the code, I understand that the perception is, is that this is not allowed because it won't meet current setbacks for that, which is correct, but you're not changing the structure. And that's where, that's where it comes into play. I can't add a deck onto this property. I can't do anything to increase the non-conformity, but I can allow the non-conformity to exist, which is what basically rezoning it would do. The structure stays exactly the same, it doesn't change. It doesn't change the flow of the neighborhood, anything like that. And if any part of the structure is damaged and not repaired in a one-year time period, I can't rebuild that structure that way. I can't. I already put a deed restriction on it to never allow it to be more than two-family units. Obviously, there'll be a commercial component to it, which will be underneath, which is going to be a warehouse or storage, however you want to consider it. But the, the actual structure in the code, it, it says, it says all over that no building shall be erected, enlarge, reconstructure, structurally alter. So I'm not altering the structure, I'm not doing anything with that. The structure's exactly the same. And that's where it comes into play with allowing the structure to continue to exist going forward. You're going to allow it to continue to exist, but you're not going to allow the non-conformity to expand. So I can't add another unit onto it. I can't add a two-hundred square foot addition to it. I can't do any of that stuff, because I would, I would do that. And that's where the code, the app, and it says, I mean, there's a whole one sixty-nine point oh nine, which was not referenced in your guys' stuff, is the application of district boundaries. So if you read that.
Okay.
That's, that's when we talk about applying the restrictions of the boundaries, which is what we're talking about, because that's what everybody's getting held up on, and that specifically says that, that when you're, when you're erecting, enlarging, reconstructing a structure, but it, that's the exact code, and we're talking about applying those to the existing one. So that's where, that's one section of the code that wasn't in there, but that's particularly what we're talking, talking about.
Yep.
Let's, let's, another thing here that jumps out at me is minimum lot size required, nine thousand square feet minimum lot.
That's, that's not. So there's not a minimum lot size with commercial. That was if there is a second-story apartment, there's not. It's all on the main floor. So there's a house, and then there's a, there's an apartment on the main floor. So that's like a, that, that doesn't apply. There's no, there's no minimum lot requirement for a commercial lot, so.
So, so on the second story that building, there's not going to be, it's not going to be.
It's not a second story, it's the main level.
Is there two stories to that house?
No. There's a, there's a house, that has a two-story house, that, that's what's currently getting rented. That's not an apartment, though. That's a house, completely.
And that's one unit?
That's one unit, right? And then the other one is a main-level apartment. It's not a apartment above a structure. It's a little confusing, because the garage is in the basement, basically.
But if you turn it into apartment, that two-story apartment is a two-story apartment, isn't it?
Two-story, it's two rental units, right, two apartments?
No.
But the, the one structure is two stories, and that's a rental unit. The other is a single story that's a rental unit.
What's that?
They're renting two units out, right?
I would be renting two units out, yes. One is a, one is a, but it's not, it's not a second story. It's not, if you look at the, you got to, you got to read the definitions of what an apartment is. An apartment has to provide cooking space, it has to provide a bathroom, it has to provide all that stuff, and that, that's on the main level. It's not, that, that's, that's for the downtown district is what that's for. And that's getting lumped in here, because it's like, okay, here's another reason why we're not allowed to essentially do it.
So the west side of this building is another apartment?
The west? That's a terrible direction, so.
East is two-story, west is.
The part above the garage.
That's where the garage is.
Yeah, so the garage is in, like, it's literally in the basement. The basement is connected to the garage.
And it's got all those amenities that you just mentioned, the bathroom, the kitchen, all that stuff?
The, yeah, it has, they, they added that to make it a nine-hundred square foot kitchen, is what they did. So it's not, it hasn't been constructed yet, but it's going to be a two-bedroom unit, is what it's going to be.
Where, where's it been yet, the, the?
Above the garage.
Above the garage?
Yeah.
That's a single story. The other's a two-story, which is also apartment.
But the.
Makes it pretty confusing when you, you say it's not a upstairs apartment, because half of it is.
Yeah, I think that's, it sounds way more confusing than it is, if there's two different living quarters in this single structure. If you want to call it a house, not an apartment, this one's an apartment, you got two rental, two living rental spaces.
Correct, and they're not on top of each other, though.
One's, one's here, and one's here. That would require it to be zoned R2 for that to exist, or R3. You know, or this B district, if you want a commercial component and those two living spaces. But you still have two independent living spaces for this, whether you want to call it a renting a house and I'm renting an apartment, but still two. You know, if you look at, you know, you focus on, you know, the apartment definition is a room or suite of rooms used as the dwelling of a family, including bath and culinary accommodations located in apartment house or mixed occupancy building. So I think this would be a mixed occupancy building if we did, if you knew what's being requested. So I think you can't read in that definition to say, where it says apartment means a room or suite of rooms used as the dwelling of a family, including bath and culinary accommodations. I don't think you can read that to say the only portion of that that's an apartment is the part that includes the bath and culinary. It has to include the bedrooms too. And if there's a bedroom upstairs, and the kitchen is downstairs, it's a two-story apartment where you've got upstairs and downstairs, and then the other one's apparently just a single story. And I'm not familiar with the house, but it sure sounds like, I don't know, kind of what the, the argument or the point of this discussion is. It seems to me that there's definitely two different living locations in this structure, plus a proposed commercial.
Well, here's, here's the confusing part. It says in the code, it says if dwellings allowed on second story of buildings, then the lot sizes are the same as R3. And R3 lot size for a two-family unit is nine thousand square feet.
And a dwelling is any building or portion thereof which is designed for or used for residential purposes. So if part of the upstairs is used for residential purposes, I think you're right then.
It's, then it has to have the R3 requirement.
I think so.
Of nine thousand square feet.
That's how I read it.
That's how I read it.
That's how I read, that's why I wrote it up.
Yeah. I don't know, there is a question about the.
So then I have a question. So if I have a house, if I have a house that has a walkout basement, is my house a, and it has one main floor above the walkout basement, is my house a, is my house on the, or my main residence where I live, is that a, is that an upstairs apartment, or is that a?
That isn't considered here. The apartment, the one apartment is two stories, there's no question. There's nothing under ground on that. It's two stories.
But they're not on top of each other. So it's not, the two-story component of it is on top of itself. It's not, it's not a, there's a commercial, there's not a commercial underneath. There, I mean, you laughed on, but it's not, it's not a laughing matter.
It's a two-story apartment.
It's a two-story.
It's a two-story apartment.
If you read the code, if you read the code, the code says that it can't be allowed above the, of the str- it's not above the commercial portion of it, because the two-story portion of it, it's on a main, it's on a main floor.
It doesn't say that. It says if dwellings allowed on second story of buildings, it has to be.
So what's the second story? Is the main story on my, if, if I have a house, it's a ranch, is that a main story?
It doesn't say, it doesn't say, it doesn't say second story of a commercial building. It says the second story of any building.
And that's why I'm asking you.
You have a second story.
I don't, because it's not, it's not, it's not a second story.
This isn't a second story right here?
No, it's.
That isn't two stories high?
That's a, that's a two-story house, yes. But we're not talking about that, he's not talking about the two-story house. He's talking about the apartment to be allowed above a second story.
No, he's got two apartments. One of them is a two-story apartment, one, one is a one-story apartment.
I don't know how you don't see that.
You got two apartments. I don't care what you call them. Okay, you got two dwellings, if you want to call them dwellings, you got a, a two-story dwelling and a one-story dwelling. You can call them whatever you want. And if you have two stories, you have any living on a second story in this, in a commercial zone, you have to read the requirements of R three. It's a nine thousand square foot minimum lot.
Let's read this here. Because obviously we're picking and choosing what we want to.
Oh, we're not picking and choosing, that's the code.
No, we are, because the, the, it's the code that's now though. But when I was here originally, the whole point was just bring it back commercial and make it happen. Now that it's brought back commercial, we decided to dig a bunch of stuff out.
No, 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 don't even go there. Well, we said, I think exactly what happened was you said, we said, we're gonna not deny this because it was a spot zone.
Yep, and I found a tenant to, uh, uh, do it that makes sense and now it's not, now it's no longer of how we make this happen.
Then you said, what if I, what if I want to zone it as commercial?
Mm-hmm.
I said, well, go ahead, we wouldn't consider that spot zoning. And we wouldn't.
Yeah.
That's exactly what I said.
Correct.
I didn't say it has, doesn't have to meet any other requirements of a commercial zone. I just said it wouldn't be spot zoning. I, and I didn't say we would, we would approve it. Number one, I can't say we would approve it. I don't have that authority to say we approve it. I said, you can bring it back as commercial if you want. And which is what you're doing. Now we're reviewing it, we're finding out all these other problems that occur in the commercial zone. We were even talking about commercial zones when you came in the first place, we were talking about change it to R three. And we said, no. And then you said, what if I bring it back commercial? And I said, well, we wouldn't consider that spot zoning. It's the only thing that was said, and that's true.
One other thing I think at least we'll catch, um, the parking, do you know, there's expressors or other options there? All the, the great majority of these parking spaces are going to require new access to the street.
Right, curb cuts.
And curb cuts are something I think the city probably has a permit requirement for.
They don't. Because I've had a curb cut on, uh, Fourth Street, I just had to read out to Scott.
They should have. The loading area, now along the side of the house, I'll say to the, is this the south could be said?
Maybe north.
North. So along loading zone right up against the house to the north, would that have a curb cut to access that too?
Uh, I'm sure it can.
I mean, I'm just curious how you'd get in and out of there without one, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, it can, if that's a requirement, I'll make it, it's just another curb cut, so either that or I structure the driveway in a way. It doesn't, the, the unloading zone, if you look at the structures that it's technically required on, but not enforced in town, if they have unloading zone or they have a spot big enough for an unloading zone, it can still be their parking lot. So you can curb cut it at that one spot and take the driveway over and make that your parking. And you can go through the unloading zone to get there. There's no requirement that you can't use that unloading zone for any other purpose other than unloading. It just, you have to have a space big enough to get in there. So that would be, I would most likely cut it at that one spot and I would take the gravel up through there and then over to the spots that it would and then it would park in those. If I need to cut a second one, I can certainly cut a second one.
So, so, you know, I, tell, somebody tells me otherwise, it doesn't meet the nine thousand square foot lot requirement, that's one issue. Another issue is, uh, and I'm not positive about that side yard. I would need a, some type of legal opinion on whether that meets a side yard setback. And the other, the other item is before we can even, before we can even vote on this, or we can vote on it, but before we could approve it, y- y- you know, a, a residential in a commercial is a non-conforming, you can, you can do it under, with a conditional use permit. You have to get a conditional use permit from the Board of Adjustments. They have to prove that. Then you have to bring it back here and then we have to decide whether we want to go ahead and change the, the zoning. So you can't put.
Re- repeat that?
You, you can't put residential units in a commercial district, a B one zone. You can, you are, with a conditional, with a, uh, conditional use permit, you can do that.
That would be, that would be to allow me to use, so that, that point is, I understand what you're saying, but there is single-family homes that exist in commercial districts currently. I own one of them.
They're, they're all.
So when it comes to that, I can keep it a single-family home until if I need to get a con- conditional use permit, that doesn't change the zoning, I can't even get the conditional use permit if it's not zoned correctly.
If you have residential units on a commercial zone, you have to get a conditional use permit to have a re- if you want us to change it.
Prior, prior to making it a two-unit structure, yes, but I, but what you're saying is that every single person out there in a commercial district that has a house, it's supposed to have a conditional use permit.
No, but I, I don't, but some of them, some of them could have been built fifty years ago and we didn't have zoning.
And so what I'm, what I'm getting at is, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that you're incorrect. What I'm saying is I'm allowed to lea- if the structure is zoned B one, okay? I am allowed to have a single-family home on B one.
You can have one or two family homes.
Okay?
Yeah.
So I'm allowed to keep the existing one to allow me to add the second unit. At that point, I have to have a conditional.
You can't have one dwelling on a commercial zone unless you can.
They're all over town.
I don't care where they're at.
I own one, so Don, I, I'm telling you right now.
It, it doesn't matter because half, I don't know, I don't know.
You don't need a conditional use permit to keep it a single-family home, you don't.
Well, if you're gonna keep it a single-family home, why do you want to?
Until, until I need the conditional use permit, until I get the second unit built. It doesn't make any sense to go and do that and then not.
Okay, here's the thing. It's, the code says you can't have residential units in a B, in a B one zone.
It does not say that. It, Don, it doesn't, because then no residential unit would be allowed in any commercial property in the period.
What it does say under B one commercial, which is what you're requesting.
Yes.
Conditional uses. The following uses may be permitted in the B one district, subject to specific conditions or requirements intended to make them compatible with and acceptable to adjacent uses. Paragraph A, one and two apartment units provided adequate off-street parking is provided. And you're looking to have two apartment units.
One or two, either one, doesn't make a difference.
Because they'll be rentals, they, right? I mean, so you'll have one and or two apartment units and according to this, one sixty five point one six, B one, paragraph two A, one and two apartment units provided off, adequate off-street parking is provided requires conditional use permit.
Okay, and so I understand to have two units in there.
One, one or two.
It says one and two apartment units.
So then I'm asking you this question right now, is that saying that any property that is currently zoned commercial and has a single-family home is, is by code supposed to have a conditional use permit?
It would probably fall in the category of an existing non-conforming use if you have a single-family home in a B one commercial district. However, if its owner occupied, I'd have to, I, this is not the issue we're looking at today, so I don't really.
But it is a, it is a, it is a valid question to get me to the next phase, basically.
Well, this asks one and two apartments. Um, it doesn't speak to owner occupied, single-family residences, so. So I just.
And, and I, and I don't know, like I said, I, you know, these, zoning came into vent in the, I think in the seventies.
So then let's just, let's circumvent this and let's try to, let, my question is, I need, I need Doug to weigh in this because it's clearly only his opinion that's going to be weighed here. As far as the non-conforming setbacks of my property, is it allowed, when you upzone a property, to have a non-conforming structure, continue to non-conform as long as you don't increase the non-conformity?
And your increase in non-conformity is by not increasing the footprint.
Mm-hmm.
I think there are issues, I think, I think there's an argument that changing the use to a business use is a change. You're changing the, because the use right now is conforming. You're causing it to be non-conforming.
That, that was my point earlier.
But, but we're, we're getting on, we're, the use of it is not a lot. So the lot is what the non-conforming issue is clearly here. So it's the front yard, it's the side yard, it's the non-conforming lot portion. It has nothing to do with the use, I'm talking about the lot.
Yep.
The structure itself in the lot with the setbacks, the requirements or whatever you want to call it as far as square footage allowed per family. My question is, is a non-conforming use structure that is not increased or erected or whatever, is that at that point, is?
Well, if you change it to commercial, then it's not non-conforming.
We're not talking about the use, we're talking about the actual, we're talking about the setbacks, because I want to get each item.
It's non-conforming if you change.
The setbacks are non-conforming.
He's causing it to be non-conforming by making that structure in.
The, the, the structure already in the lot is already non-conforming.
If you were building a building and you would have to have that nine thousand square feet.
Well, it is non-conforming.
It is, the lot in the house is non-conforming currently.
The argument he's making or suggestion, I think you guys get it, is he's saying, I'll acknowledge I'm non-conforming, but I'm not going to make that non-conformance any worse, I'm just changing the use. So I'll go from non-conforming residential to non-conforming commercial.
Yes.
Right? And, you know, I, I think with the apart- for example, let's say go to the side yard setback for a minute, just the lot size is an issue, I think, as we've agreed that it, because of the R three requirement, if there's going to be those apartments. I'd have to look at this, but all of the parking located throughout all of those areas of setback, you know, is that changing the footprint? You know, you're saying it doesn't change footprint of the structure, but now you're putting in all these required parking spots. You're basically going to eat up, you know, a great majority of the front yard and side yard with the required parking. One thing we haven't talked about, and it's more of an engineer question than a lawyer question, but there's specific rules in place that cities are supposed to follow with allowing driveway access close to intersections.
Yeah, it's on the corner too.
I want to, I want to say it's got to be thirty feet off the right of way. And that's going to arguably create another issue, and I thought of that when we're sitting here looking at this picture, that I've got a case in another town where that's come up. It's just a safety issue there.
It's a safety issue. I think, uh, doesn't the police chief have to, to sign off on or doesn't get involved in that? You know? You know, I read, I read that on, you know, on these, the corner lots, and I read that and read it. I s- I still didn't, I didn't, I didn't get that.
Well, there's, there's probably language in your code and I look at too many, I can't remember which, what all codes say, but if you think of a, a lot of codes, they'll even have a diagram where if you have, you know, if that's, if that's your corner.
Yeah.
And that's Dakota's house, it'll basically say, you know, there'll be some measurements that, you know, require line of sight.
Right.
From a certain point here to a certain point here.
Right.
Um, so having any kind of parking in that particular area or fence or any structure prohibited, but I haven't looked at your code for that question. But I just, just thought of it as.
Well, it's, it's in there and I read it and I just, I just didn't, didn't understand it. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty confusing the way they've got that, uh, corner lot situation. Basically, it says you have to have two front yards, um, if you've got a, a corner lot, but I, 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 that's not the issue. I think, uh.
So the questions that I have are, what, what does it take to get this, wh- what, and, or anything? And, and what's it, what's it take to get this property rezoned from B one, or not B one, from R one to B one?
Well, I'm gonna, I'll give you just my opinion and you guys can all.
I, I'm, I mean, do we need, so is it a question we're gonna ask for Doug? Because it, like, opinions, I guess.
Yeah.
Has to be based in fact.
Exactly.
And so my question would be for Doug at Carter's Council, because you're going to refer back to him, it's, this is what we want to do. So I guess Doug, what, what does, what needs to happen for my request to basically be able to be completed?
I would say this, I disagree with the statement you just made about it being just a legal question. Because even if you present a map that shows, based on this, I can qualify, I can meet the specific code requirements, that doesn't mean you have to approve it.
No.
You still, their opinions matter from the standpoint if they think this use fits that area.
So my question is for code conformity, what, what's needed in your opinion to make this happen?
To make it cross the initial threshold, to make it even legally possible?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I'm not comfortable with the parking as shown that that, at least on this one diagram, and it shows two parking spots out in the right of way.
Yeah, then which obviously that, that's subject to.
The two front parking lots, you give, or spots. Two goals to the neighboring residential, that are R one. Um, the loading, unloading area, I know your mind is, you don't really need it, but you can mark it.
It's not enforced anywhere else, but I can mark it off, so.
You can mark it off, but that really doesn't make it what it is. And again, I recognize there's a convenience store across the street, there's residential homes all around this. Um, if, you know, the code does allow all of that parking area to be grabbed. You know, and is that something the board and the neighbors?
Well.
I know they signed off on this, but would they only control what the yard.
No, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, let's back up a minute. Now, the, the signatures that you've got, were those signatures requi- requesting a change to R three or?
I've informed all of them that that's what, yes, they've all, one of them moved to California, John doesn't own the Casey's anymore. And there's, uh, another one that moved out as well. So there's three of the list. Luckily, I, I got far more than the fifty percent initially that I needed, so I still need their requirements. If you take a circle and go, I still need their requirements, they're all aware of it. I've had conversation with them after the city council meeting, I even reiterated it back to all of them, their phone numbers are on there. I texted them as well. Oh, did I knock on doors again? No, I did not knock on doors, but they're all aware. I've been in front of the city council seven, eight times. I've had no one voice or opinion as far as in opposition of it. I've had nothing but, uh, I, I mean, no one told me no, that I asked for a signature, I'll put it that way.
So my question is, um, and I'll just be honest with you, the way I look at this, I'm pretty uncomfortable with all the things that we're just saying, well, we're just going to overlook that.
And that's why I'm asking what Doug's.
Let me finish, please. So, do we need to have the Board of Adjustments?
Well, yeah.
Look at these things and see if they would approve them? Because I'm not, I'm not comfortable approving things like this that are totally against our codes.
Here's, here's, in my opinion, and I, I'm gonna give you my opinion, uh, there's, there's about three issues that need to be addressed. First one is, I, I would be very comfortable if you went to the Board of Adjustments and somehow got, got a variance on the side yard setbacks, because I don't think you meet the side yard setbacks. You also would need to get a conditional use permit from the Board of Adjustments to have residential structures on a commercial property. And then you also have to get variance for inadequate lot size for a commercial.
There is no, there is no lot size requirement.
No, there is. If you put resi- if you put a one-family or two-family dwelling or apartment, whatever you want to call them, you have to get a conditional use permit.
Well, the R three then applies for the lot size.
Yeah, the R three, then R three, plus you have, you have to get a conditional use permit to have residential units on a commercial property. So if you can go to the Board of Adjustments and get them to give you variance on the side yard setbacks, and, and another issue that we're, that, that this board can decide is if, if we even think this lot should be a commercial lot. Because if we don't think it should be a commercial lot, if it's not set up to be a commercial lot and never was intended to be a commercial lot, we can deny it just because we don't think it should be a commercial lot. We could not deny it, we can recommend to council that we disapprove it. If, if we don't like the fact that we think this should not be a commercial lot, we aren't comfortable with the parking, we aren't comfortable with the setbacks, we aren't comfortable with the size of the lot, we aren't comfortable with not having a conditional use permit of, of residents in, in a C one or B one, um, uh, we can just flat out say we don't like it as a commercial lot. And that council can do whatever they want after that. So that, that is what this board can do. But I would, I would, I would look at it again, if you go to the Board of Adjustments and get a variance for the side yard, you get a variance for the size of the lot, you get conditional use apart- for the apartments, and I would need a much better diagram of the parking than what you've got right now. Because the, the way it is right now, um, I wouldn't approve that parking the way it is right now.
Under what terms though?
Number one.
If it meets, so my question is when it comes to parking, if it meets the legal requirements of the ordinance, right?
You, you have, you'd have to show me that, and I can't see it.
But I'm trying to clarify now to stop all the previous.
Yeah.
So if it meets the legal requirements of the ordinance, whether you like the way that it looks or whether you like how it's structured, are you going to put up a fight when it comes to parking? If it meets the legal requirements of the ordinance to put the parking.
Well, I don't think that lot was a. Well, I don't think that lot was designed to have six parking lots and a ten by fifty seven.
And that's why I'm asking that question, cuz there's no, why would I even go through the process if you're saying that parking is an issue? To figure out this parking issue, and then you're gonna tell me you don't like the way that it looks the next time you meet.
That's just me, we'd have to, the whole board would have to.
And I'm asking you specifically what you, what you're, cuz it's, you're the, you you're the one that leads the discussions, you're the ones that's most vocal.
I I agree, Don, with the point that you made about taking these items to the board of adjustment. It seems like uh. This is kind of on a war league with those issues that have been raised and.
And that's where I'm trying to get clarification.
Well, what you wanna know, if you get.
What I'm gonna say is, you're you're asking me to go through all these hurdles, and you're not even giving me an inkling of.
I get it.
Is this gonna happen, so you want me to go? Get a variance, apply that, make the board of adjustments meet, okay, if I meet that, and I meet the legal requirements of off-street parking, right? You guys are not giving me any indication whatsoever that you're even going to approve this, right, and we're gonna be back at the same thing. Where it's like, okay, now you deny it, I've gotten the variances, and I know I have to get the council to vote against the planning and zoning board, which. They obviously don't do, otherwise I feel like it would've been done at this point, so.
I think the off-street parking is a big thing too, because you can say, yes, I can put it here, yes, I can put it there, but until we actually see something.
Yeah, and so that's my question, my question is, if I go to the, if if Doug is saying that I need to have a these legal items taken care of, okay? I go to the board of adjustments, I get a variance, okay, for whatever the two, three items that we're talking about, okay? And then I get the, I figure out the off-street parking to make it legally compliant, okay? Whether that means I gotta tear out the back deck to have a better spot to park, whatever I gotta do to make it happen, right? Is are those two items, the only two things that are holding this up from getting this to to be zoned commercial, if I do those two things. I meet the legal requirements, you may not like the way that it looks on paper, but it will meet the legal requirements cuz it has to. And I get the variance, which takes it off of your case, it's not spot zoning because you're touching another commercial property, okay? So my question is, if I get those two things done, is can, will this get over the hump and go from, will it be voted yes is my question? So I'll go through the whole process of doing this, I'll hit all the roadblocks that are thrown in front of me. To to get those things, if it comes back and the variance is done, the conditional use permit is done, and I meet the legal requirements of the off-street parking, will I be granted a? I mean, I just, I mean, other- otherwise you're asking me to do all this work for literally to have no idea, you're, I'm gonna spend another month getting all this stuff cleared up, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Make the city council even more mad at me cuz I'm even, like, I needed to figure, I needed to figure this out at this stage, and this was the stage.
To cover and throw one more thing ahead of these guys, just to be very open and honest. Variances in Iowa are illegal. Okay, there's a board of adjustment, one of the things they can do is grant variances. Iowa Supreme Court has been very, very clear, a variance is only to be granted if but for the variance, the property has no value. This property has value, it's marketable, it can be lived in, it can, you know, it has value, it's always had value.
But the board of adjustments can still grant the variance.
The board of adjustment can ignore my advice, but I just wanna be clear with you, that my advice to them will be that the Iowa Supreme Court has said. You cannot legally give a variance.
But ultimately, it's a political decision, and obviously.
It is.
If it's illegal to grant it, and somebody brings a lawsuit against, because they don't, they're not happy that I did it, they can obviously bring a lawsuit against and say, hey, this is what it is. But it's a political decision.
Just wanna make that clear, though.
The advice is obviously to call it the board of no, but if the board of no says yes, then then it stands.
Cuz really, the answer is, and I told this to a lot of cities I've worked with, if somebody comes forward with something that makes sense. But for it to work, they need a variance. You shouldn't give them a variance, you should change your code so that that. What makes sense now makes sense for everybody. And an example, uh, some old parts of town, or some communities only allowed accessory buildings of a certain size. Uh, no more than fifteen feet tall, could be three feet off the property lines as a standalone building. Now you get some old neighborhoods, or some bigger neighborhoods, newer neighbors in town, they get bigger lots, they aren't these sixty by hundred and fifty foot deep old lots. And the city wants people to put their boats and buildings in there, RVs and buildings not parked in the backyard. So a guy comes forward and says, I bought the lot next door, I tore down an old house, I bought the lot, I'd like to put up a little bit bigger building. Code won't let him. Well. Makes sense for him to do it, so you change the code to say, if your lot is at least this big. Then you can do it, but if you wanna go taller than fifteen feet, now you gotta be five feet off the line, if you wanna go higher than twenty feet, you gotta be ten feet off the line. And then that rule applies to everybody who has a lot capable of meeting those.
And we're kind of in the process of that right now with trying to.
We're trying to revise.
Revise a the a garage height thing that we've been.
Yeah, I I even thought about that to try to, you know, I thought, I thought, well, maybe we could, maybe there's some codes that we could. Could change, but that, but that, then then it has, that's a, number one, that's a long drawn out process, that's months and months and months to co- to change the code. Plus, then it has to apply to everybody, and I'm not so sure any of these codes that we're talking about. Are to the benefit of the community in a whole, as a whole, to change. You know, that was another option, you know, you could consider, but I don't think we wanna go down that hole.
Well, Dakota, I can't, I can't speak for the rest of the board, and I can't tell you how any, how that would come down if, but if you've got. All these things taken care of, and the board of adjustments thinks that that's fine to. To not go by the code and stuff and, which would surprise me, but if they did. You know, I'd have a hard time voting against you because it's been approved by them and and, you know, I can't tell you, you know, other things could pop up, I'm not gonna guarantee you that.
They always do, so again, I'm fully prepared for somebody to get a shovel out, pick up some more stuff, so my, that's that's why I want, that's why I wanna be clear, because if I leave here. And there's no direction to get this done, then then. I'm gonna continue to be a thorn in everyone's side until I can just get a straight answer, if your answer is, no, I'm not gonna approve it because I don't like it. I just wanna know that you're not gonna approve it, because I need to know where to go, and if you're saying that, I don't have a problem with the structure, I don't have a problem with it. I don't wanna be on the hook for when this comes across, right, cuz it's not legally avail, or it's not whatever, I just need to know at what point. If I get the variances, or I get it to be legally conforming with the parking and all the other stuff. If it's off of your shoulders, it's not spot zoning, if you say yes, then obviously I know, if you say no, and you're not voting yes, you're just telling me if if, and I just want an honest answer. And you're not gonna hurt my feelings, if it's gonna go through, great, if it's not, I need to know because I don't, it's, we're, we're, we're wasting time talking about it.
Oh, my inclination was to say what Dean said, so.
I would too.
You know, I go with that, and then you said something about the board of adjustment doesn't really. Mean anything.
They're 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 very restricted to it.
They're very, very difficult to get them to approve.
The one thing different to you guys on board of adjustment, I mean, they do in fact make a decision, where you guys make recommendations, so they're.
Okay.
They've got public hearing, they gotta jump through some hoops, they do make decisions, um, the council can ask them to reconsider typically, they don't have to. If the council doesn't like their decision, the council can take them to court, any resident can take them to court if they're mad about it. And as we talked about, I think Dakota gets, you know, under the law, variances are typically illegal, and if somebody challenged it, I think it would get set aside. Now, one other thing you may run into with the board of adjustment, they may say, you know, when when Dakota goes to them, they may say, why are we looking at giving you variances on a B one lot? It's not zoned B one, we need the planning and zoning. You know, it's a it's a chicken egg thing, right? So arguably, you know.
Well, we we really don't even have the authority to ask him to get a variance, that would have to come from the council, wouldn't it?
And I think in that, and tell me if I'm wrong, but I think in the earlier request, at one of the points that went to the councilor's discussion, it looks like you're gonna need a variance to have it be a duplex, and there was a suggestion, you go to the board of adjustment then.
Yeah, correct, the problem with that is there was far. More uh, issues that needed variances granted than compared to commercial, and as far as uh. It still would be a spot zone, and it would still go back up to council after variances with the planning and zoning voting it down and saying no. So the issue with that request was that it got voted down twice here, so to follow that request up, get the variances, and then now ask. Six council members to vote yes against it, not only are they voting against planning zoning, but there there, there's tons of variances, so this one requires. Far less variances, right, it meets the, if I can get it to meet the requirements, that's my question, so we don't have to.
Well, I I don't know if we can ask you to go to the planning or to go to the board of justice, I think that basically. What we need to do.
So that's that's where maybe, that's what we need to figure out.
Well, here's here's the thing, we we, somebody's gonna need a motion. And. I'm just, my opinion as the chairman, there's, there's the issue with the side yard setbacks, there's the issue with parking, there's the issue with uh, with the. Residential residential and a commercial zone, and there's an issue with the lot size. And those are four issues that um, we need to. Either decide we're gonna uh, recommend this to the council to change, or with those issues in mind, we have to. Uh, make a re- recommendation that they don't change it to to commercial, so that's basically what we have to do. And you can also just in your, in your own mind, you can al- also just say. You know, I don't, I don't, this really was was signed as a residence, uh, I, and I don't think it fits in that area as a commercial uh, of of occupancy. You can use that as you as your own opinion too. So um, I I I think we're beating dead horses here, I've got four issues that that I am really concerned about, and um. I think somebody needs, we need to get get going on this, somebody needs to make a motion, whether we either uh, recommend the council that be changed to commercial, or recommend that it uh, not be changed.
Why why would, why are we doing that now versus if if I need to go get a variance? So clearly, the answer is to vote it down now under the pre- uh, under the precedent that it's not legally conforming, so.
We're gonna make a vote today, one way or the other.
Okay, and why is that, why is that beneficial to do the vote today?
Cuz then the council can decide whether they want you to get.
It's the same exact thing that we ran into before, so why would we vote it, it's clearly gonna get voted no, okay, so my question is. Why does it have to be voted on today, why is there an urgency, we're already a year into this thing, so. If you're telling me, that's why I'm asking the questions, if I get the variances, right, that's if, if I get the variances. And if I meet the legal requirements for off-street parking, then there's no objections to the the legality of it, okay? And so why would, why would we, why would we vote no on it now if I need to go get a variance?
Can you see variances without us having a a vote?
Can you vote yes pending variances?
You could do a couple of things, one, you could vote to recommend that the council deny the request. With, you don't even have to really give a lot of reasons, obviously, you've talked about a lot of things that are concerns, I mean, as simple as the chair said, it could just be, you just don't think this is the right place for this use with. With all those, you know, uses. Or you could say, we're gonna recommend you approve it.
End of story.
Or you could say, we're gonna recommend the council approve. Conditioned upon. The owner obtaining all necessary variances and conditional use permit. So that would you, that would be you guys saying that I think this is an okay use, to his point, so long as he can meet all those requirements to get a variances. So you only go there if you land on, I'm okay with it if he can meet all the rules, if you aren't really okay with it, then don't waste his time.
So. We need, somebody.
Sounds like I have four people that are pretty well in favor of it at this point, so obviously, it's not gonna happen unless I get the variances, it'll. Die out with everything else, so that would be my, uh, that would be my hope, is that you uh. Vote to approve it pending that I meet the off-street requirements, the legal requirements of off-street parking, and then I meet the. Or I I'm able to get the three variances that I need to meet the lot requirements.
Well, we can't vote on it unless somebody makes a motion.
I'll make a motion, what he said, that give it to the council, and then if he meets all the variances and everything, I think it'd be.
Like, okay, so so we do have a motion to. Did you say deny the request?
No, I would say. Give it to the council and let them decide if he gets all the variances and everything. Then we'd okay it.
To approve it pending variances.
So we have to give it, so so when you say we give it to the council, we have to give it to council with a yes or a no?
Yeah, when he's saying we would approve it.
We would approve.
Motion to approve with.
Based on, contingent on them getting all the variances.
All the variances, yeah.
I'd second it that way.
Okay, we have a motion, does everybody understand the motion? All those in favor?
All right.
Posed? No. Okay, we've just approved it, to go to council.
How many? You're a six-member board?
He is a, it's a actually a six-member board.
You've got one abstention because of a conflict, and in that situation, then you're treated as a five-member board, so you voted three to one?
Did everybody vote, or did you vote?
I'm more in favor of the R three than the B one.
It's all pen, it's there, the use is not gonna be different, the use is exactly the same.
Yes or no?
Yes.
There was three yeses, so the recommendation would be to the council to approve it subject to.
Subject to variances.
And the conditional use permit.
And the conditional use permit, which which I, the conditional use permit is basically a, is is not gonna be an issue, it's formality, basically.
It's a formality.
I mean, I can't see them denying you a conditional use permit. But the variances do, the the council can determine what they think the variances should be, or do we need to give them a a?
Wouldn't they just send it to the board of adjustments, I would assume.
Well, there's like issue, you have to have, you have to have issues.
We do, side yard, front yard.
We got, we got a lot, side yard, front yard, parking, lot size.
Lot size. Parking, like I said, parking, I'll meet the legal requirement, so I don't need a variance for the parking, cuz I will, I will meet the legal requirements of the parking. I can't change a lot size.
So we basically voted that we proved this as a commercial use on this.
Pending variances.
Pending approval by the board of adjustments on all the variances.
Yes.
Okay, so you get all that, that in the minutes?
And I'm not trying to throw a red flag, or one thing that, not to pull something else out, but again, looking at all the parking. And I apologize, I'm just not, I still know it through code by looking at it every day, there might be some green space requirements that are gonna cause a problem with using what appears to be sixty-five, seventy percent of the yard for parking.
Not on a commercial lot, if it was residential, I would run into issues with parking, cuz you have side yard and backyard requirements, and you have green space, but on. Commercial, you can build it literally to the footprint, you don't have to have a single blade of grass.
On a, on all commercial? Because sometimes a downtown commercial, you can build to the, to the boundary lines, other.
Yeah, so I just, I just talked to Blake today about a structure on an existing. B one lot that I own, as far as what I'm allowed to put on there, and I'm allowed, because it's in the center. I just can't, it's the only thing it's gotta meet is the. One variance that we're talking about, the line of sight, as long as it meets that line of sight, and it's twenty-five or twenty feet back of that line of sight. I can literally build to the exact inch of what I want, so.
Like on a rear yard, you can put your driveway right up to the lot line. Even though a lot tends to, you do that, you don't have a right to use a neighbor's property, so if they put a fence up on the property line, you can't open your door.
Yeah, well.
There is a fence there already.
Yeah, and there is a fence there, plus the neighbor's um, garage is built on the lot line, and actually, their E extends out over lot.
Yeah, city codes, I think some that require your driveways and paved areas to be six feet off the lot line, so you can have that. Door swing and get out and.
Well, I don't, I don't think we had, I I've looked at the parking, I don't know if we've got that in ours, our our co- our code is very antiquated. It really basically needs to be revised.
Well, I just wanted to throw. Because I, now that this, we've got a point of recommendation of approval subject to these things through the. Board of adjustment for the council to consider, the council could take this recommendation and just say no. You know, just because you recommend it, they approve it subject to these changes, they could say, no, we just think it's a bad use, we're not gonna do it, end of story. Or they could say, you know, we'll go along with that recommendation for now, let's see what the board of adjustment thinks. In the meantime, there will be additional staff work to look at, okay, what exactly, you know, in light of Dakota's argument today, and what exactly is required for the board of adjustment to look at? And penciling all that out, so there may be, and I'm gonna say, it's not like we're gonna go digging in the code to find another roadblock, but now that there's some.
I fully expect one, though.
But now there's some clarity on the recommendation, and the big concern being some parking is a big one, so looking closer at that and figuring out how that's gonna work. And it may even result in a, you know. Again, city codes, talk about design standards and site plans for commercial improvements, and is this something the city engineer's supposed to look at, where these driveways might be and all of that, so I don't know.
So the question though, you know, if there's a, let's say that there's an obvious. Uh, noncompliance of the code. You know, I I don't know if there is or isn't, let's just say there is. Can the city council vote to change the zoning when there's an obviously, when it's obviously not in compliance with the code?
They can change, the the only way they can do it, in my opinion, when they change zoning, they can amend the code, or they can, you can do conditional. Well, no, that that's kind of a different, I say you can do conditional zoning, so they could, sometimes what happens, they're like, well. We're okay with that being commercial, but we're not okay with seven parking spots in the yard, or eight, whatever it ends up being. So they can say, we'll agree to this zoning change to allow for this zone with the business, excuse me, and one apartment. Which limits your parking spaces, and they can all fit over here, so we'll rezone it with the condition that it's one apartment and one business, as opposed to two and one.
So if it doesn't meet the, let's say, the lot size, obviously doesn't meet the lot size requirement?
Right.
And this, then the city council has the authority to just disregard that and say, we're gonna give you a, that, this zone regardless of what the code says?
Well, that, they can only really ignore it if he gets a variance. You know, cause the variance is saying the code isn't gonna have to apply to this lot.
So they actually can't, if there are obvious, um, conditions in here that.
Well, changing the zoning and allowing for his intended use are kind of two different things too, um, in a way. This is kind of a mess, I mean, this is a lot going on here, right? I mean, we've got what was a single-family house that's being looked at now for two residential units and a business on a quarter lot. Next to residential, next to commercial, with a lot of parking requirements, um, that already is non-conforming by lot size and, and the setbacks, things of that nature. Argument is, well, it's not non-conforming use if we change the zoning and I'm using it correctly, which there's some truth to that, but all these other non-conformities come into play, there's just an awful lot at play. Can the council ignore the law? No.
So if there's an obvious, if there's an obvious area of the code that he's not in compliance with, they just can't say yes?
Right, and that gets back to that discussion.
So then they would have to go to a, they would have to request a variance. Or, or change the code.
Change the code.
Right.
So, can, can I just have to do this? Can I, uh, can I speak? I have a question concerning a garage that the city council approved. That we declined, that did not meet three to four code requirements, the one on B Avenue. The council approved that garage, we just, we approved, we, we declined it. It was the one garage, they were gonna build it small, and I made it big, it's a huge one on third. The council approved that garage that had pretty much the exact same type of things, where the lot size was not big enough. Uh, it was an oversized, it didn't have the setbacks, but the council approved it. Right after they came out of a closed session, I don't know what the closed session was for, but they approved that after.
Were there any circumstances there? I believe. Well, I don't know, but if, uh, we can, if you wanna discuss anything.
No, I'm just, I, I'm just curious based on what he said, and I would thought that happened.
We wanna make a motion.
I, I want a quick bit of clarity on variances, variances required.
Um, we don't really know what they all are at this point.
Yeah, side yard. You're not, they're not specific.
Do we have to, we, do we have to list those?
I think you just, I think the motion was required variances.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And there could be two or three others.
Who knows?
Let's, let's hopefully make it easy, always.
Thank you.
You know, I think there's other issues there, and I just can't. You, you go, you go all the way in there and read the quarter lot code, tell me if you can figure it out, cause I can't. Forty percent of this, thirty percent, it can't be more than fifty-eight percent of total, I mean, it's just, somebody needs to review that one. Okay, so do, do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I am, but I'll sure do it.
You got a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Got a second, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.